Ward, Sixth Council District. Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill 104. Resolution authorizing the approval of the 2020 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan, Council Districts All. Bill 109. Resolution adopting plan revisions to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facility plan for the town homes on Fifth Avenue project located on tax map parcel 52-g-133 at 5127, 5129, 5131, 5133, and 5135 Fifth Avenue. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 105. Resolution providing the issuance of a warrant in favor of effect formerly Comcast in the amount of $6,878.25 for digital advertising services in connection with the citywide recruiting plan and providing for the payment of the cost thereof. Bill 106. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of SHRM in the amount of $16,500 for the Pennsylvania federal labor law posters and providing for the payment at the cost thereof. Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle presents. Bill 107. Resolution amending Resolution 94 of 2019 by changing the issuance to read as follows: The issuance of a warrant in the total amount of $8,500 payable to Diane and Ronald J. Barkey, Robert Pearson Associates as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Bill 108. Resolution for the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $3,490 in favor of Tri Rivers Consulting Services related to the expert medical testimony of James L. Cosgrove, M.D., for the use at trial in the matter of Willa Mae Matthews versus City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill 110. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning of the City of Pittsburgh to accept a remittance from Point Park University in the amount of $15,000. This remittance will be, will fund the design and fabrication of the historic district signage not to exceed $15,000. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, February 11th. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kael Smith, President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. We will be joined today by students from John Morrow Elementary School in Councilwoman Wilson's district who will also sing Lift Every Voice and, and they'll sing that song. And I'd also like to, during our moment of silence, I'd like to remember the mother of Mayor William Paduto who passed away and was buried yesterday. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Paduto family. And we also have someone at the end of the meeting we'll, we'll recognize as well who will do another moment of silence. But during this moment of silence, please think of the mayor's mother and the family. Okay, we're ready when you are. Turn towards the flag. Turn towards the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you everyone. Now you have a song, is that correct? Okay. Councilwoman Wilson, do you want to come up with your group? Thank you, you did a nice job with the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
That's what I just told him, you want to sing in the mic?
Let me hear it.
Is that it? Wait, Councilwoman Wilson, you want to give them all an opportunity to say their name and grade and introduce the guest with them as well?
All right, I want to thank, want to thank Mike Nichols for putting this together. I know it's been 28 years. It's a tradition, tradition he's been doing in different, no, not 28? All right. And thank you for, to the teachers and to the music director for bringing Pittsburgh Morrow 3rd Grade. So, Mike, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give this off to you. All right?
Good morning, my name is Jessica Kendall. I'd like to introduce my fantastic friends. Say your name nice and loud.
Elise.
Brielle.
Avina.
Talia.
Nakish.
Cassidy.
Amari.
Khadija.
Aleah.
Jamel.
Damari.
Danny.
Steven.
Maggie.
Phylla Alfred.
Lucas.
Navio.
Anaya.
Amarian.
Inez.
Kevin McCain.
Aleah.
Bibiana.
Desrielle.
Akira.
Zamira.
And I am accompanied by my wonderful colleague, Ms. Morris, and we are just so grateful for this opportunity. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Do you, did you want to take a photo? Councilwoman Wilson, do you want to take a photo with everyone? Thank you. Thank you so much for entertaining us and starting our day off on a good note, literally. Thank you, that was very nice. Our next order of business is proclamation. We have Councilwoman Lavelle. With the proclamation? Good morning, Councilman.
If all those here for the Carter G. Woodson proclamation, please come forward. Yeah, there's a traffic jam trying to... Come all the way, come all the way up. All right. You can stand, you can stand on the steps if you would like. Okay. Whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life in History, now called the Association for the Study of African American Life in History. Whereas, under Dr. Woodson's pioneering leadership, the association created research and publication outlets for black scholars through the establishment of the Journal of Negro History in 1916 and the Negro History Bulletin in 1937. Whereas, in 1926, Dr. Woodson initiated the celebration of Negro History Week to correspond with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, which was later expanded to include the entire month of February for people of all ethnic and social backgrounds to discuss the black experience. Whereas, Dr. Edna B. McKenzie Branch in Pittsburgh is working to preserve Dr. Woodson's legacy and the legacy of other African American advocates, including working with the Black Political Empowerment Project to present a program on African Americans and the vote on February 15th, 2020 at the Carnegie Library of, of Pittsburgh Homewood Branch. Whereas, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh wishes to honor the late Dr. Woodson and commend Dr. Edna B. McKenzie Branch for the work they have done to promote, research, preserve, interpret, and disseminate information about black life, history, and the culture to the global community, especially in the creation of Black History Month. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 11th to be Dr. Carter G. Woodson Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The proclamations approved. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Good morning. I'm Ronald B. Saunders. I'm president of the Dr. Edna B. McKenzie Branch Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And the reason why we do all this during the month of February is our founder, Carter G. Woodson, is the person who founded Black History Month. So, we owe that a gratitude to Carter G. Woodson as well as to all the council members, City of Pittsburgh fathers, who made this possible. We're very honored to accept this proclamation. I'd like to take time out now just to introduce folks who are here from Asala as well as from BPEP and other organizations. To my left, I have Louise Walker. This is Linda McDougall. This is Nancy Bolden, and she's an institution in herself, Nancy Bolden. Here I have Anita Russell, highly talented gifted author. Brother Hannah here has been with BPEP for many years. I have Judy Saunders, my wife, Marlene Branson, who's also the president of AUGHS. She's also the president, she's a Titan. Here we have a pioneer in her own right. She's Martha, Martha Richards Conley was the first African American woman to graduate from University of Pittsburgh Law School. She's also the first black woman to get a law license in Allegheny County. So, let's give her a great big round of applause. Behind her, we have Janine Jelke Seals, who's an aspiring young person who has a lot of talent and potential. We're very proud to have, as we cut across all demographics as far as Asala membership as well as BPEP. And here we have Cynthia, Cynthia Devine. She's just, she's just divine, absolutely. And back behind her, we have Tim Stevens. We all know Tim and his work in the community. He's been steadfast, consistent, and relentless in his pursuit for justice and equality for all demographics. Sister here. Lorraine Cross from BPEP, brother. Rodney King from BPEP. Ron King from BPEP. Ken Miller from BPEP and the brother, Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, who's also a member of BPEP. And he represents a Lavelle family that goes back many, many generations. His grandfather was a Titan in the African American community. A lot of folks don't know, but his lawsuit in 1963 made it possible so realtors all through the country could have access to the multifare housing list. That was denied African American realtors until his father blazed the path and blazed the trail. Without any further ado, we're honored again to accept this proclamation. Thank you. And I have a proclamation for the League of Women Voters.
Will the League of Women Voters please come forward? Somebody call order in here. Will the League of Women Voters please come forward?
So, he's really attached the Park's plan. The Park's Conservancy Plan. Yeah, that's what it says. It says adopting the Park Conservancy Plan. So, it's like the legal council doesn't have, I mean, it's...
Deb and Erica. Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strasburg, you want to come up? Councilwoman Strasburg, you want to come up? I mean, that's gross. Good morning. Thank you so much. Do you want to come up, Tim? Want to join us? Join us? Join us? I think as we're trying to get a lot of people out to vote, you understand and appreciate the work that both the previous organization and the work of the League of Women Voters have done. The League of Women Voters have been around for 100 years. And I got to say, I'm so excited to say my mother's 98 and to my knowledge has not missed a vote yet. And I can, and I love her stories about when she first began to vote, she was so excited that her, she waited while her father cranked the car so they could go vote. And so, I love the stories, I love listening to her history, and I love hearing about our history. And I think collectively, as we work together with people who, who we really would like to have more of a voice in our government, I think it's important to recognize and acknowledge that 100 years the League of Women Voters have been doing this work for a very long... So, I want to thank you for your work and acknowledge it. Whereas, the League of Women Voters is celebrating 100 years of empowering voters. And whereas, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization founded by Carrie Chapman Kat in 1920, probably around the time my mother started voting, to help women carry out their new responsive responsibilities as voters and encourage them to use their power to play a part in shaping public policy. And whereas, today, the League continues to empower voters by presenting unbiased information about elections, the voting process, and issues, encouraging informed and active participation in government. And whereas, the League is always working on vital issues of concerns to members and to the public and, and advocates for or against policies and the public interest without supporting or opposing any party or candidate. And whereas, diversity, equity, and inclusion are central to their vision of democracy, to the division, their vision of democracy, in which every person has the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. And whereas, in honor of their 100th birthday, the League of Women Voters of Greater Pittsburgh will be holding a celebration on Saturday, February 15th, 2020, at the Senator John Hines History Center. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the League of Women Voters for their work promoting active participatory elections and democracy and congratulates them on their 100th anniversary. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 11th, 2020 to be the League of Women Voters Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can we have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Any, any of those opposed? Proclamation's approved. And thank you so much for your work. I know without you, a lot of the women here on council would not be. So, I want to thank you very much for your work. And I, just a little tidbit of information, when I first started to think about running, a gentleman came and talked to me and told me that women don't belong in politics. Thank you for proving them wrong, and I was happy to do so too. Do you want to come say a few words? And does the clerk's office who keeps us all in line want to come up? We want you included. Okay? You can use this one or that one, either one.
Oh, thank you.
Tell people how they can get involved.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And, and thank you Teresa Smith, Kael Smith, for the proclamation and honoring us today. We're, we're happy to be here and we are celebrating, of course, our 100th birthday on the 14th of this month. And the 15th is our birthday party at the Hines History Center. We have a actress coming in and she's going to be portraying one of our founders, our birth, people that started the whole movement and women's right to vote with Susan B. Anthony, which is her actual birth date. So, that's pretty cool. So, if you can come, please, and I want to invite you, your, your kids, your grandkids. It's about empowering women, it's about empowering our youth and getting them excited and getting them involved and knowing they can make a difference. So, it's for all ages. So, please, we'd like to invite everyone to that and...
What's your website? How can people get involved, make a donation?
Oh, Legal Women Voters, LWVpittsburgh.org. You can make a donation there. Also, we have a bunch of events coming up this year focusing on women's suffrage. The PittsburghSuffrage100.com just came online and we are working closely with the City of Pittsburgh and a lot of organizations and with women's suffrage events going on. And I know Ron wanted to say a few words.
Let me just say the order, we'll have Ron. Councilmembers, do you, either you want to speak? Strasburg or Gross? So, we have the councilwoman and then Tim Stevens, if you'd like to say something?
So, so first of all, of course, I, I just wanted to say that the League of Women Voters is open to humans who are not female. And I've been a member for about 10 years, but it occurred to me that although 100 years seems like a very long time, we have some members who have been, who have been with the League for almost half of that century. So, I wish to salute the members who have been serving for the longest time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you want to come up here?
I'm going to talk to this microphone. I'm more used to... Feedback, do you want to turn that off? I just want to thank the League, especially for engaging and supporting robust democracy and robust political debate. As a candidate, you're always really relieved when it's the League of Women Voters moderating a political forum because they make sure it's fair, they make sure everyone's heard, they make sure the audience has participation, and that you know it's going to be a very well-run event. So, I want to thank you for that. And a personal note, many years ago before I ever imagined running myself, in a time 20 years ago when I was in 53 and I was 33, and it was a time when Pittsburghers were very concerned in getting younger people who were in that generation to engage in civic life. It was a women, it was a League of Women Voters forum that I attended on how to run for office. And then we used some of your materials for a kind of ad hoc forum that we did called Run Baby Run where we were training people our age to run and younger. And I have actually had opponents, now that I've been in office, who went through that training that was a spinoff from yours and acknowledged that, like, I'm running against you, but you were like doing the training when I attended. So, it really does mean, I think, that we have a stronger democracy in a stronger Pittsburgh. So, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. It's really...
We're 300 strong.
That's fantastic. Well, I just want to congratulate the local chapter of the League of Women Voters and the League of Women Voters overall nationwide for 100 years. That is quite a milestone. We don't have too, too many institutions or organizations that, that last that long and are so strong for it. We, what Councilwoman Gross said is exactly right. Not only is it an organization that can really run a debate or run, you know, moderate a, a political forum, but you also, I think the key word in the proclamation was unbiased. You offer unbiased information about candidates. Anytime someone comes to me and says, you know, how can I find out more information about people who are running for office? I point them to the League of Women Voters because you have information that's unbiased on both sides of any kind of electoral debate, but also on issue advocacy as well or issues. You'll host forums that are moderated in a very fair way, allow everyone to ask questions, and show both sides of an issue, whether it's the environment, whether it's social justice, whether it's, you know, voting rights, anything. And I really appreciate having that kind of increasingly rare unbiased voice in the political discourse. There was a time when I worked for a nonprofit organization and I had to do a lot of fundraising, a lot of small donor meetings. And one of them took me out to Johnstown and the person I was meeting with, who was a member of this organization, who I was about to ask a lot of money from, happened to be a, a member of the League of Women Voters. And so, not only was she supportive of the work that I was doing and wanting to hear more and she, I talked to her a little bit about her involvement, but she was also aghast when she found out that I was going straight from that meeting to an evening meeting there without getting dinner, and she fed me dinner. So, there's also something special about the League of Women Voters too, you know, they know how to take care of people as well. So, I'm, I'm really grateful that you're here in Pittsburgh, that you're so strong, and congratulations on 100 years.
Thank you.
Cynthia, you want to say a few words? Anybody else?
Yeah.
Hi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm one of those that Ron referred to who this summer will be my 50th year as, as a member. Eileen, who else here? I mean, as young as I look, can you imagine that? I joined in Charlottesville, Virginia as a young woman, a young mother. We took our kids, we had coffee clutches, it was the thing to do. And it still is in Charlottesville. And so much has happened in that city and cities all across the United States. So, it's been a privilege to be a member of the League, and I think I've done just about every job there is to do in the League. And it's wonderful training ground for women. Graduate school is good. Motherhood in the League are even better. So, thank you. One anecdote, a number of years ago, we had a program called Kids Around Town, and we worked with young children in the public schools to teach them about the civic process. We brought a group down here from Gladstone School and marched the children in like these that were here earlier this morning. And at that time, they had portraits of all of the old mayor, the former mayors, nobody's old, the former mayors lined up across the room. And one little boy looked up and looked around at all of these desks and this dais and all of these things and said, "Is this Judge Judy?" At least he was learning about the court system a little bit. So, thank you all. Thank you for your proclamation, and we're very proud and pleased to be known as the League of Women Voters Day in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? So, I'm going to ask our male colleagues to come up as well because I want to say it has been an honor to serve with our current administration and our current colleagues who have really been very supportive of women issues. And one of the things I keep...
...active participation in government. And whereas the League is always working on vital issues of concerns to members and to the public and advocates for or against policies and the public interest without supporting or opposing any party or candidate. And whereas diversity, equity, and inclusion are central to their vision of democracy, to the vision, their vision of democracy, in which every person has the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. And whereas, in honor of their 100th birthday, the League of Women Voters of Greater Pittsburgh will be holding a celebration on Saturday, February 15, 2020, at the Senator John Hines History Center. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the League of Women Voters for their work promoting active participatory elections and democracy, and congratulates them on their 100th anniversary. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 11, 2020, to be the League of Women Voters Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can we have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Any, any of those opposed? Proclamation is approved. And thank you so much for your work. I know without you, a lot of the women here on council would not be. So I want to thank you very much for your work. And I, just a little tidbit of information, when I first started to think about running, a gentleman came and talked to me and told me that women don't belong in politics. Thank you for proving them wrong, and I was happy to do so too. Do you want to come say a few words? And does the clerk's office who keeps us all in line want to come up? We want you included. Okay?
Shall I use this one?
You can use this one or that one, either one.
Oh, thank you.
Tell people how they get involved.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And, and thank you Theresa Smith, Kayle Smith, for the proclamation and honoring us today. We're, we're happy to be here, and we are celebrating, of course, our 100th birthday on the 14th of this month, and the 15th is our birthday party at the Hines History Center. We have a actress coming in, and she's going to be portraying one of our founders, our birth, people that started the whole movement and women's right to vote with Susan B. Anthony, which is her actual birth date. So that's pretty cool. So if you can come, please, and I want to invite you, your, your kids, your grandkids. It's about empowering women, it's about empowering our youth, and getting them excited and getting them involved, and knowing they can make a difference. So it's for all ages. So please, we'd like to invite everyone to that, and...
What's your website? How can people get involved, make a donation?
Oh, Legal Women Voters, L W V Pittsburgh dot org. You can make a donation there. Also, we have a bunch of events coming up this year focusing on women's suffrage. The PittsburghSuffrage100.com just came online, and we are working closely with the City of Pittsburgh and a lot of organizations, and with women's suffrage events going on. And I know Ron wanted to say a few words.
Very few, actually.
Let me just say the order, we'll have Ron, council members, do you, either of you want to speak? Strasburger, Gross?
I'm for it.
Okay. So we have the councilwoman, and then Tim Stevens, if you'd like to say something?
So, so first of all, of course, I, I just wanted to say that the League of Women Voters is open to humans who are not female. And I've been a member for about 10 years, but it occurred to me that although 100 years seems like a very long time, we have some members who have been, who have been with the League for almost half of that century. So I wish to salute the members who have been serving for the longest time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you want to come up here?
I'm going to talk to this microphone. I'm more used to. Feedback, do you want to turn that off?
I just want to thank the League, especially for engaging and supporting robust democracy and robust political debate. As a candidate, you're always really relieved when it's the League of Women Voters moderating a political forum, because they make sure it's fair, they make sure everyone's heard, they make sure the audience has participation, and that you know it's going to be a very well-run event. So I want to thank you for that. And a personal note, many years ago before I ever imagined running myself, in a time, 20 years ago, when I was in 53, and I was 33, and it was a time when Pittsburghers were very concerned in getting younger people who were in that generation to engage in civic life. It was a women, it was a League of Women Voters forum that I attended on how to run for office. And then we used some of your materials for a kind of ad hoc forum that we did called Run Baby Run, where we were training people our age to run, and younger. And I have actually had opponents, now that I've been in office, who went through that training, that was a spinoff from yours, and acknowledged that, like, "I'm running against you, but you were, like, doing the training when I attended." So it really does mean, I think, that we have a stronger democracy and a stronger Pittsburgh. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. It's really...
We're 300 strong.
That's fantastic.
Well, I just want to congratulate the local chapter of the League of Women Voters, and the League of Women Voters overall nationwide for 100 years. That is quite a milestone. We don't have too, too many institutions or organizations that, that last that long and are so strong for it. We, what Councilwoman Gross said is exactly right. Not only is it an organization that can really run a debate, or run, you know, moderate a, a political forum, but you also, I think the key word in the proclamation was unbiased. You offer unbiased information about candidates. Anytime someone comes to me and says, you know, "How can I find out more information about people who are running for office?", I point them to the League of Women Voters, because you have information that's unbiased on both sides of any kind of electoral debate, but also on issue advocacy as well, or issues. You'll host forums that are moderated in a very fair way, allow everyone to ask questions, and show both sides of an issue, whether it's the environment, whether it's social justice, whether it's, you know, voting rights, anything. And I really appreciate having that kind of increasingly rare unbiased voice in the political discourse. There was a time when I worked for a nonprofit organization, and I had to do a lot of fundraising, a lot of small donor meetings. And one of them took me out to Johnstown, and the person I was meeting with, who was a member of this organization, who I was about to ask a lot of money from, happened to be a, a member of the League of Women Voters. And so not only was she supportive of the work that I was doing and wanting to hear more, and she, I talked to her a little bit about her involvement, but she was also aghast when she found out that I was going straight from that meeting to an evening meeting there without getting dinner, and she fed me dinner. So there's also something special about the League of Women Voters, too. You know, they know how to take care of people as well. So I'm, I'm really grateful that you're here in Pittsburgh, that you're so strong, and congratulations on 100 years.
Thank you.
Kim, do you want to say a few words? Anybody else?
Yeah.
Hi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm one of those that Ron referred to, who this summer will be my 50th year as a, as a member. Eileen, who else here? I mean, as young as I look, can you imagine that? I joined in Charlottesville, Virginia, as a young woman, a young mother. We took our kids, we had coffee clutches, it was the thing to do, and it still is in Charlottesville. And so much has happened in that city, and cities all across the United States. So it's been a privilege to be a member of the League, and I think I've done just about every job there is to do in the League, and it's wonderful training ground for women. Graduate school is good. Motherhood in the League are even better. So, thank you. One anecdote, a number of years ago, we had a program called Kids Around Town, and we worked with young children in the public schools to teach them about the civic process. We brought a group down here from Gladstone School, and marched the children in, like these that were here earlier this morning. And at that time, they had portraits of all of the old mayor, the former mayors, nobody's old, the former mayors lined up across the room, and one little boy looked up and looked around at all of these desks, and this dais, and all of these things, and said, "Is this Judge Judy?" At least he was learning about the court system a little bit. So thank you all. Thank you for your proclamation, and we're very proud and pleased to be known as the League of Women Voters Day in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? So I'm going to ask our male colleagues to come up as well, because I want to say it has been an honor to serve with our current administration and our current colleagues, who have really been very supportive of women's issues. And one of the things I keep trying to say is, women's issues are all of our issues, and that we all have, should have an interest in those issues. And so I, I can tell you that our colleagues certainly have been more than supportive, and have oftentimes taken the initiative in introducing some legislation. So I want to thank them all for being more than supportive, but I want to invite them up to take a photo with us.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Yes, sure.
I wanted to mention that our voter's guide is now in the 21st century, and is not just available on paper, but if you go to vote411.org, you can find out about all the candidates from the presidential race all the way down.
Thank you, thank you. And I use that, that form often. Does anyone want to come, want to come forward for a photo?
Yeah.
So thank you very much for your work.
Come on, the water's hot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go. Welcome.
Why am I doing this?
We have another shift.
Why have the people of Pittsburgh since 2007? Sorry, somebody.
No, it's not their fault.
You got the attitude.
I'm moderate.
We'll have to bring you back for another question.
Thank you, Tim, for making sure you joined them. The next order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of the three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize, and when the red light comes on, your time is expired. Please relinquish the podium. For the first speaker, please come to the podium. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning.
We should have you come up with us.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown, and I, to the women that are still here from the, from the League of Women Voters, to you women, you need to come here and watch them, because they're talking out both sides of their mouth. Do you know when I was speaking, Ms. Gross started talking, and I told her to stop it? Do you know Mr. Burgess made me stop? He said, "I'm not allowed to talk to her that way." How is she allowed to take up my time in three minutes? You just come down and get your awards, but you need to come down here and check on them. You need to be here, because they put us out when they want to, anytime they feel like it. You need to be here, women. Don't just come and get your, a trophy and leave. You need to watch what this city is doing. It's also on 90.5, the day, they were talking about, as far as black people, how we are not given the same respect that you are, black communities. I want you to know this, that in Squirrel Hill, when O'Connor was living, we had where if a child did anything, there was one person that they could go to, and if they could, could pay whatever was wrong, they never went to jail. Now, I was listening to Teddy K.A., Mangino, he was hollering, "Yeah, you criminals up in the hill, up in the hill, you criminals." Okay, we got criminals, but they get caught. They will never get caught in your area in Squirrel Hill, because you pay off. They never go to juvenile court for anything. My niece has grandsons, and she said, "Grandma, Auntie Vaughn, there's nothing but black kids in court, because if you go in the white neighborhood, if you have someone can pay that restitution, they never go downtown." Do you understand? You're creating criminals. We create them, but they go to jail, they answer for them. And then sometime, they're not even criminals and get killed, like Anton Jones, Anton, um, Rose. And you know that is all over the United States. All over the United States, they know about Anton Rose. Yes didn't believe it. Yes, yes have here, in this United States, where you give the police so much respect. In a different country, they actually do not respect the police. That's a job, but they don't make a dog a policeman. Do you realize what you've done? A dog is the same as a human. God didn't make a dog the same as a human, because you got to depend on who's training the dog, who is training the dog. Also, I bring this up because Mrs. Harris is gone, but I want you to look at this beautiful headband. This is from another, another country, and this is, shows that this is a married woman. Now, there were gold, there was different things of gold out there. There's no longer. Now, Ms. Harris took it and said that, took, because she said, they said it for her. Come on now, with nothing being...
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
You're welcome. But nothing would be in there.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please.
Please come back, please come back.
Next speaker, please.
Yeah, you should come.
Next speaker, please. Last call, next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Melanie Ramsey. I'm very concerned about the steelworkers. My mother, my dad worked in the steel mills, and it's very unwise for us nationally not to have steel mills. All you have is plastic and nuclear bombs, and that isn't the way to fight a war all the time in self-defense. It's very foolish to give up your defense system to Japan. They were our former enemies. And I played chess, I made it to the state championship. I was the only woman there. I also knew the scientist, Dr. James Carr, inventor of the metal detector. It was invented about 1974, and he personally received $3,400 from Westinghouse. Why don't you protect the steelworkers? Why don't you work out an agreement? There are mediators that could work between the city and this current steel company at Braddock. You don't want to lose all your steel mills, then you are defenseless.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Squirrel Hill. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020. 412-969-7997, 24/7 you can contact me, tell or text. University of Oxford, Center for Jewish Israeli Studies at St. Cross College, I did that. University of Pittsburgh Jewish Studies Program, Instructor of Modern Israel, I did that. The Israel Heritage Room offered me a research grant, go to Jerusalem, Israel, to do work at the Central Zionist Archives on Herzl and Jewish State Formation. Shalom, from a non-Jew. Tandem concerns of Pittsburgh City Council are religion and religionism, religion being the domain of the superhuman. Religionism, as far as I'm concerned, is biased for religion over non-religion, or for one, religion over another. 28 January 2020, Ms. Kayle Smith and all other district representatives sanctioned "God Bless America" as part of the council meeting, encouraging citizens to stand and sing "God Bless America," "Wait on God," which one? Now, cue anon. Establishing bias for religion as a part of a formal local government meeting, violating the Establishment Clause of Amendment I of the U.S. Constitution, and violating the U.S. Pennsylvania City Civil Rights of non-religionist atheistic citizens. Council allows God to refer to Satan, since to some Pittsburghers, Satan is God. So in the role of counselor in a Pittsburgh City Government Meeting, when you sing "God Bless America," and therefore "God Bless Pittsburgh," you are representing those followers of the religion of Satanism. You are singing "Satan Bless America." On their behalf, council approves of God as a variable in Pittsburgh citizen activities and Pittsburgh government actions. Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, how was the God variable at work in the Tree of Life actions and activities? Did God intervene to stop the God-fearing activity of the slayer, of the followers, of the religion of Judaism? No evidence. God did not intervene. The actions of human Pittsburgh police officers did. Where was the God of Judaism when Jews were killed in Nazi death factories? Nowhere. Where were we, is my question? The killing could have been stopped by the Allies, could have stopped the trains, but did not. We were nowhere. We cannot wait now for some god somewhere to intervene. We have to intervene, especially for our children. "God Bless America" was God blessing or damning the Jews, the Armenians, other genocides all across the world and throughout human history. Israel cannot wait, Palestine cannot wait. The government of Israel is one of the most atheistic, and so is ours.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we move on to the presentation of papers. Thank you to our guests for coming out to speak. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 111, Resolution Adopting the Plan Submitted to the Electors of the City Restoring Pittsburgh Parks and the Parks Plan by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy prior to the November 5, 2019 municipal election, as the official parks plan of the city and the City of Pittsburgh's Parks, Parks Trust Fund.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 103, Resolution Granting Unto Matt Barnett Day Three Design Their Successors, and Assigns the License and Privilege to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense a Stormwater Runoff Mitigation Rain Garden at 915 Liberty Avenue, Second Ward, Sixth Council District.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 104, Resolution Authorizing the Approval of the 2020 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan. Bill Number 109, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Town Homes on Fifth Avenue, project located at 5127, 29, 5131, 33, and 35 Fifth Avenue.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 105, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Effect in the Amount of $6,878.25 for Digital Advertising Services in Connection with the Citywide Recruiting Plan and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof. Bill Number 106, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of SHRM in the Amount of $16,500 for Pennsylvania and Federal Label Law Posters and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof.
Thank you. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 107, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 94 by changing the issuance to read as follows, the issuance of a warrant in the total amount of $8,500 payable to Diane and Ronald J. Barkey as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Bill Number 108, Resolution for Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,490 in Favor of Tri Rivers Consulting Services Related to Expert Medical Testimony of James L. Cosgrove, M.D., for USAD Trial in the Reference to the Matter of Willa Mae Matthews versus the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you. Good morning. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 110, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of City Planning to Accept a Remittance from Point Park University in the Amount of $15,000. This remittance, remittance will fund the design and fabrication of historic district signage, not to exceed $15,000.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, and I have my own papers. And now we'll move on to the reports of committee for final action. We have Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Good morning. Thank you, Councilman. I already said good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 100, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for February 5, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 64, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 794 of 2019, Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with B2G Now to List the Correct Years for Which the Contract Is Valid. Bill Number 65, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $8,744.72 to Kittleson LLC for Professional Services in Relation to Lawsuits filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 69, Resolution to Authorize and Direct the Incuring of Non-Electorial Debt Through the Issuance of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City in the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $52,400,000. Bill Number 72, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 by Transferring a Total of $20,000 Within Neighborhood District One Needs to War Memorial. Bill Number 73, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 549 by Transferring $20,000 Within Neighborhood, Within District One Neighborhood Needs to War Memorial.
Thank you. You have heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. Those in favor of passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Aye. Mr. Coghill. Aye. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Aye. Mr. Lavelle. Aye. Mr. O'Connor. Aye. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Aye. Mrs. Kayle Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes nine, noes zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
We need Councilman Coghill.
I'm looking at my agenda. Sorry.
20090, Madam President.
Pardon? Councilman, what would you, Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President.
I moved two things into one.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 101, Report of the Committee on Public Works for February 5, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 90, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 591 of 2016, which was previously amended by Resolution 870 of 2019, for professional services in connection with the bike infrastructure program, and providing for the payment of the costs, not to exceed $836,632, to account for both previous work completed on the bike infrastructure projects utilizing Resolution 591, and to account for the new total bid amount for the gap to the Point Project, not to exceed $955,155.96.
Thank you. You have heard the reading in the title of the bills? Is there any discussion on the bills? Discussion on the bills?
No, thanks.
So no one else has discussion. I'm just going to mention about the bike, the work on the bike lanes. I think that we really need to work on getting some organizations. I know we have one organization, and they do a lot of, a lot of work together, but I think that after talking to some of the people in my district, we're talking about creating a new committee, one that would be Allegheny County-wide. And so I know that there's some interest there, because I think people want to have a voice, and they don't want to feel that things are just being pushed down their throat. They want to have a voice in what's happening with the bikes, and what's happening with bike lanes in the City of Pittsburgh, and bike infrastructure in general. And I think that they have some valid, you know, reasons and valid points, and a lot of them are cyclists, and a lot of them just want to feel like they have a voice, other than something being preorganized and preordained for them, and that the plans for the bike lanes will not necessarily include their concerns, or address their, their, their issues that will not necessarily include their concerns or address their, their issues that they'd like to see addressed, or even connect to places that they want to connect to. So I think, I'm just going to say that I'm having those conversations with a larger part of, of not only my district but Allegheny County-wide, because we want to make sure everybody has some, some voice in this. And I know that they have meetings, and I know that you can become a member, and I think that people have seen a somewhat of a monopoly in this area. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. As you know, I've long been supportive of bike lanes in my district, and, but, and we have this draft of a new bike plan, and I'm getting some positive feedback and some negative feedback from some of the neighborhoods in my district. And I think one of the things that I would like a better understanding of as the representative is how it fits with other requests about streets and right-of-ways. We have streets where people are speeding, where there are lots of children, and many school bus stops that have been a recurring problem. We're starting to get some infrastructure changes, like the speed humps. And we have these new proposals from the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure about there being streets that are called neighborways, that are streets that are especially for slower speeds. And then we really still, as the city, don't have, I think, full public data about where are all school bus stops, where we know children are competing with commuters in the morning to try to get safely to their bus stops, and commuters are speeding through neighborhood streets, increasingly more and more tertiary streets, right? Because their phones tell them about a street that might not have known existed. And so on streets where there are dozens and dozens of childrens, over the course, not just of an hour, half an hour, but of several hours, because there are so many different bus stops going to so many different schools from our neighborhoods, that, that we've got commuter speeding, right? I mean, being clocked at something like 45, 50 miles an hour on streets that should be 25 miles an hour. So it would be, I think, helpful for neighborhoods to understand how these things are fitting, or if they're fitting together, right? If they are or are not fitting together, to address the neighbors' concerns. So I think even as representatives for the neighborhoods, we, we don't, there, there are many different suggestions and plans coming from multiple sources, and it would be helpful for us and for our residents to understand if there is a logic, or maybe places where there's something that may be in conflict that could be corrected. So, thank you.
Any other members? I would hope that Councilman Coghill or yourself, or someone would call for a post-agenda regarding the issue, because we'd really like to examine that plan with some members being able to ask questions publicly, not necessarily just in meetings. And I do think that Director Ricks is doing a lot in trying to get into the neighborhoods that haven't necessarily had a voice or felt like they were involved in the process. But I know that I've been asking for years for Pioneer School to be involved in the process and planning process. That's in your district, but, you know, there's people in my district that work there that are asking. And I think that when you talk about the, the disabled community, I don't hear a lot about them in these, these plans. And so we can't forget that, yes, there's 25% of the people in the City of Pittsburgh that maybe do not own a vehicle, but a lot of them may be people with disabilities. And if we're forgetting the disability community, we are not being inclusive, as we say, are. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
I do want to acknowledge that DOMI has been extremely responsive, more so than city departments were years before, when I've called attention to a, you know, corner where I know there are something like 10 or 12 bus pickups in the morning or drop-offs in the afternoon that are significant, that didn't ever have crosswalks, and now they do. But it is kind of ad hoc, right? They've responded to ones where I've had neighbors' concerns, and I've drawn it to their attention. And I'm curious to see, and I've been, I've been pushing for them for years to kind of get the entire network of school bus stops, keeping in mind it changes from year to year, and I understand that fully, so that we can make sure that we have safe routes to school for children trying to get to their, their bus stops or walking to their schools. So, I'll stop there.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I think most of us are in agreement that bike lanes and bike infrastructure are important to the City of Pittsburgh in terms of growth, because the median age in Pittsburgh is 38 years old. A lot of people are moving to Pittsburgh that don't have vehicles or in student debt and need the bike infrastructure or want the bike infrastructure, and to help stabilize our neighborhoods with a lot of vacant housing and with vacant storefronts, it's important for both the economy and for our housing. But we have to do it in a way that's inclusive and mindful, and really not coming in with a preconceived idea, but really hearing what the public is saying that they really, is important to them. And so I think that we've been asking for this long enough. We're allocating dollars, and I think it's time for us to start organizing ourselves a little bit. Councilwoman Strasburger, and then Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, I'll, I agree with a lot of what has already been said, so I won't reiterate that. DOMI has done a lot better at figuring out how to do a lot more.
A lot less, yeah.
With, yeah, with, as, you know, building the plane as they fly it, as, as they say. A couple of things. One, you know, as Pittsburgh actually grows in population rather than sees decline, and I know that the growth right now in terms of population is uneven in terms of geographic distribution, but we cannot afford to have one car per person. Our air quality can't take it. Climate, when it comes to climate change, we cannot take it. It is, and our roads certainly cannot take it. So we need to be thinking about other types of infrastructure that don't rely on cars. Another thing is that I understand that there is a consulting group that might be coming in that isn't going to be telling us what we should do or what we shouldn't do. It's going to be assisting DOMI and, I think, Bike Pittsburgh, which by the way is also a pedestrian advocacy group, not just a bike advocacy group, to engage people, to actually engage people, to actually get to them and say, what do you want? What is a priority for you in your, on your streets, whether it's for pedestrians or wheelchair users or bikes, to sort of get to the why of why we need this and, and how we get to it, rather than, here's what we're doing, you know, react. So that's something that I understand should be coming down the pike and, and occurring over the next couple of years. And I'd be interested to learn more about how that's all going to work. But to, to what, to what others have said already, yes, it seems like it's a little bit district by district, and that there's not a whole cohesive plan for, you know, I feel like I get a lot of requests for traffic safety measures at intersections, and now speed humps and traffic calming, and I get it from constituents, I get it from bike ped groups, I get it from, you know, individual neighborhood bike ped groups, I get it from, from advocacy organizations, and I'm the intermediary to then translate that and send it to DOMI. So what I'm doing in my district is, in District 8, is getting together with DOMI, with the traffic enforcement for the police, and with the bike ped organizations for some of the neighborhoods that I represent, so we can all get together and figure out what is the priority for District 8. But there's not really a way to do that citywide right now. So it is, yeah, we're kind of in this transition time where we need to figure out the best way to prioritize and to make sure that people have their, their voices heard on these issues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Coghill.
As Councilwoman Strasburger said, I would love to see less cars. You know, when you have a block of, just one city block that has 60 homes on it and two cars per household, and you have on-street parking without driveways, it is, it's a nightmare in some of my streets. But I just wanted to add with the, I think I saw something, I came across this last week, with complete streets. It scares me when I see some of these bike lanes on these busy roads. It really does. Because, you know, without a barrier there, accidents will happen. Is it a long-term plan? I guess I hope is to kind of separate that if we could, and I, I could imagine that causes a lot of, you know, issues in its own right. But, but I would love to see a barrier be, on the roads that are wide enough for bike lanes for the simple fact of safety.
Thank you. And I'm just, I'm just going to clarify real quickly. Since you are the Chair of that committee, I think if you don't get it, receive an update, we hold the bills until you do receive an update, because you should have same information as every other council member here, and knowing what's going on there, especially more so because you should be informing us. Councilman Wilson.
I just wanted to say that, you know, being a community leader previously to being on city council, you know, I worked directly with the community, and now I'm in the position that I can work directly, you know, even further with the community. And I see how DOMI is trying to explain themselves in certain situations about improvements. And I think it's important that we have a official communications person with DOMI, so like a government community affairs liaison, to actually be the, the middle person between the community and also DOMI. I think sometimes as lost, sometimes we're trying to create a lot of organization around the community, the city, and the council office, maybe someone from the administration. But I know that there was a position previously for the community and government affairs liaison, and I think it'd be great to have that position filled, and to make sure that we're having a professional in there that's really going to navigate and really tell a story of how we're trying to improve these, this infrastructure in a way that's going to work for a lot of different people.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And I'm just going to end my conversation with that. I think that, as I said before, we all understand and value the, the idea of bike infrastructure and what it adds to the City of Pittsburgh. I think there's a lot of communication gaps occurring, although I do think that DOMI is doing a tremendous amount of work. I think the administration communicates well, but I think when you're the chairperson and you're bringing legislation forward, you should, you should have that briefing, and groups should be meeting with you. And so I just want to make sure that as we move forward, people understand that we're going to respect the committee chairs, and that's, that's one of the things, we're going to make sure we're advocating for council to receive the information that they need to help support their, their communities and the city as a whole. And, and I mean, I think it's, we talk about going carless and all those things that are really important to the environment, and they are usually important to the environment, but we can't forget that we have an aging population that not everyone can drive, and not everyone can have other, you know, alternatives to vehicles. Sometimes a vehicle is important to get somebody from point A to point B in the City of Pittsburgh, and I do understand that, and I think there's a lot to be said for that, but we can't forget as we move forward, those people who can't, who can't commute the way that we would like for them to be able to. So I think that there has to be a real conversation around that, not just forcing this idea, but real conversation, how are we moving people that are aging or disabled? So now, having, having heard all the conversations, and the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, noes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. Now we'll move on to Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 102, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for February 5, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 63, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter Into an Agreement with Henderson Brothers for Services Relating to the Brokerage of a One-Year Excess Worker Compensation Insurance Policy for a Sum Not to Exceed $30,000. The Contract Allows For Two One-Year Renewal Options at the Same Price at the Discretion of the City.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you have heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the bill's ready for final pass, final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. Now we'll move on to motions and resolutions, and I just have a few announcements. I want to first mention that the executive session scheduled for this afternoon will be postponed, and we'll reschedule it for next week. I'll give further information when we come, come forward. But we do have the council briefing. This afternoon with sessions at 1:30 and at 2:15, council will hold a briefing on the 2020 Housing Opportunity Fund Allocation Plan in the large conference room, and I really encourage members to attend, because I think that there's a lot of information that we need to make sure that people are aware of. And that's it for that. I also have a, I'd like to do a moment of silence for Dani Cherillo. Her husband is a Pittsburgh police officer. She worked at 911 and passed away suddenly this past week. I believe they remember, lived in Cary. I'm not, I'm not certain. So could we have a moment of silence for Dani and for thoughts for her family? Okay, thank you. Thank you, members. There are a lot of people had a lot of great things to say about her and how she worked with the whole 911 center and helped people, and her husband, obviously, is Pittsburgh police officer, doing a lot in the community as well. So, any other members? Any, Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a brief update for members of council on the amusement tax bill. I'm going to ask just for one more week. I know Councilmen Wilson, Councilwoman Strasburger wish to be updated a little bit on what we're doing. Councilwoman Gross, happy to do so. We've had several meetings now. I talked directly with John Kelly, who made those recommendations to our finance department, and asked if he would be willing to follow former Councilwoman Rudyak's plain language ordinance to help us better understand what's being asked of us. I don't think that people or organizations, I should say, are necessarily opposed. I think it's that they don't quite understand what the language in the bill is asking them to do. So Mr. Kelly said it had that to me sometime today, tomorrow. So with one more week, I think we should be fine to move the bill ahead, but I appreciate your patience, and I just want to let you know that we're working diligently on it to, to clear up any misunderstanding and bring it back to the table.
Thank you, Councilman. I know you're going to do your due diligence on it. Any other members? Seeing no further comment, we'll motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Removed.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1741.42]